I'm gonna call this, uh, city council work session to order. Being, um, January twenty-third, year of our Lord, 2024, 3:01 PM. Item two invocation will be given by council member Cornell and followed by item three. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up. Councilmember?
You got it.
Dear heavenly Father, I just pray for your blessings on the city of Odessa and to guide the council this evening in the decision-making and just look after Odessa, Father. I'm so pleased that we can feel your presence among us and I just bless your name and give honor to you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
You may be seated. We're gonna move on to item three. Consider approving purchase of forty set of bunkers for Odessa Fire Rescue. Uh, these are bunkers that were placed bunkers that reach expiration or near expiration according to NFPA standards. Chief Ritchie, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Odessa Fire Rescue is seeking approval to purchase forty sets of bunkers. The total for the purchase is one forty, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. This will come out of our EMS Lifeline account. That account right now does not have enough money, but we do have a EMS Lifeline general fund that we'll borrow the rest out of for the, for a difference of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Counselor, we have any questions? Counselor, we'll ask, do you have a time restraint on this?
Um, no, sir. No, I, I, I believe we're good. Yes, I believe we're good.
So...
Yesterday, we had a conversation, we had to get us...
The reason why I'm asking is that this is a work session, but because it is a call meeting, we can't take action. We don't have to wait two weeks.
That would be greatly appreciated, but if it's gonna cause any issues, we can wait.
No, there's no issues.
If we're not, we do have to consider all their...
So, Counselor, I am gonna ask, instead of a, a consensus, I will ask for a motion and a second for approval on item three.
So be it.
I have a motion by council member Peany, second by council member Cornell, all in favor and Keddie, but say not.
Aye.
All opposing, Keddie, but say nay. Motion passed unanimously, thank you very much, sir. Item four, uh, this is a sneak peek to the city of Odessa's new redesign of the website. Ms. McDaniel's. There we go.
How is everyone today?
We're doing great.
All right, new year, new look, new website, you guys ready for a sneak peek?
Let's go for it.
What happened to that frog in your throat?
It's getting better.
It is, it is.
So, yes, new year, um, of course, one of the big things when I came to the city, I got lots and lots of questions. I like to put that up there. The website could be a little confusing and I like to compare it to a dirty house. We have a lot of pages and a lot of links. So, you can see, the solution we thought was to streamline and consolidate a lot of things. So, some of the things that you're gonna see is one place for a directory, one-stop shopping, I like to call it. Uh, structure, we're gonna have departments, divisions, um, and everything, again, just to one spot. So, let's keep going. I do wanna let you know, though, in November, our contract is gonna expire with Civic, so we're gonna be weighing some different options. This is just a quick preview, but the good thing with this redesign, it came at no cost. And I apologize, I keep losing my voice. I know, Mark, Mark's been making fun of me. But as we look at this, um, as I mentioned, for no cost, one of the big things, good partnerships. And I have to really brag about Civic in this. We were, we were able to, after looking at some stuff, drop one of our bills from about twenty-seven thousand. So, as you can see, they're about twenty-two hundred. So, that is the look, we are going with a very professional streamlined look. Everything is gonna be, like I said, very structured. You can even see right there on, on the bottom part, the bottom line.
Odessa Fire Rescue is seeking approval to purchase forty sets of bunkers.
To get to know your mayor and city council members. Again, that streamlined, very clean, professional look, uh, of one-stop shopping. It's broken up into departments and the divisions. I don't know if you can see it from there, can you see it pretty clearly?
Can you make it? Can you make it bigger on our screen?
I don't know if we'll get it.
I don't think we'll be able to.
And so, one of the things, when they go to the page where the picture is currently, we're gonna have a video that pops up. And the good thing is, we can change that video out.
It'll keep their attention.
So, just kinda giving it a new look, new fresh look, and again, we can switch that out at any time. Um, because we really also wanna add in there our different departments, solid waste, um, you know, any and every department that we can think of. Because we think Odessa is really about the people, not only the places. I mean, that, that's what makes us such a special place. So, with that said, that's the end, I kept it short and sweet. Uh, we're gonna have our calendars in one spot. Of course, I have to leave you with a teaser, the launch, knock on wood, will happen on Thursday. So, this is just to get you ready for that transition that's gonna take place. All the meeting and events will be listed in one spot, all the news releases. Again, one-stop shopping to make it easy for our citizens and our employees.
All right, Monica?
The question I have is, like Parks Department, like Ratliff Ranch, will somebody be able to click on Ratliff Ranch and go straight to the pro shop and book a tee time or talk to them or whatever they wanna do?
Yes, so one thing that people don't realize, um, is like Ratliff Ranch has its own website. So, anytime it says proceed to this link, we do have that listed under Parks and Rec, under a division. And so, people will be able to click that and they have their own website that they manage currently. That's one of the other things we're doing. We have five websites, we have City of Odessa, Parks and Rec, these were considered sub-websites. Uh, Parks and Rec, OPD, Hebo, Odessa Beautiful, and Downtown Odessa. So, we streamlined those five sites that were all for the Civic and Ratliff Ranch still has its own website at this time.
And you're not, I mean, for stupid people like me, I think it'd be easy just to, so it's in one place, you just touch, you just tap Parks and Parks and Rec and hit Ratliff Ranch, it takes you right to it, I mean...
Yeah, so it is a sub-menu on there if you, I don't think it's on this slide. So, if you go to Parks and Rec under the department, it's listed as what's considered a division. But yes, that is our long-term goal to get rid of all these extra, 'cause I'll give you an example. Um, to redesign each of those sites was gonna cost about twenty-two thousand dollars. So, that's part of the reason we're really starting to streamline, that it's a process because we, we have thousands and thousands of pages.
Yeah, I, I understand, the, the difference being that is that Ratliff Ranch is an income source for us. So, the easier we make it for people to access the Ratliff Ranch, which it's close to making money right now. And if we make it easier with all these other golf courses closing, then we have a real opportunity as a city to, to enjoy some revenue from that for a change instead of just pouring money into it, which is, it's been sadly neglected. So, that's, that's my only, that's my only concern.
We do on this one, let's see if it'll go back, it is listed, let's take you to the very front of that website.
And the goal is to, over time, just have the one website that you would be able to get that to. It's just the steps to get there as much as anything.
So, the good thing is on the front page, you can't see it on this one, but it is one of the sub-menus right here. So, we did put Ratliff Ranch golf links at the very front, so right away, people know, I mean, it's right there at the top. It is not on, it's not on this page, 'cause it's only got a partial view of it, but, um, I'll take a screenshot.
No, that, that's okay, I just, just a question. And just, we have a great, season's coming up and we've got a great opportunity this season, so I just...
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for tackling, it was a huge undertaking. I know that we've been talking about it and I think that you're being very conservative when you say there are five sub-menus. That is five that you're going with, but there are hundreds and thousands left over accumulation of decade after decade of house cleaning. And so, this is probably one of the most things that, uh, staff has uncovered as we continue to go through the, uh, the audit, is that we've seen just uncontrolled, um, purchases of, you know, software and things that were put in, then forgotten, then moved on to the next thing and it just stayed and it lingered and it continued to pile on into the communications. And so, when you're trying to store data, it's gotta go sort through all of it to find its place, it just slows down the system. We were paying for things that were not even used for so long. So, it's gonna take some time to sort through it all and then start taking it out. Tell, tell that man sitting over here with the glasses, he knows exactly what I'm talking about.
We had documents from two thousand and eleven and we've been very conservative with deleting because we also wanna make sure we're staying with the legalities of the internet and they change sometimes. So, we've been very conservative in the deletion process, just to play it safe.
And now that we're also doing not just, uh, paper and archiving that digitally and paper form, but we also have video. Video and audio that all has to be correlated and so what's missing, what's not missing, what's been lost, crashed, deleted. It, it is a huge process.
But think about it, we had to redesign our main site and those four, that would've been twenty-two thousand times four plus our main site. So, this is kind of a big step in saving money, um, in the next few months when we do make the next decision on that website 'cause it was initially in a, a five-year agreement.
The big test is when we all go on and on the, on Thursday and see we can navigate. Then we'll be able to come back with you. Okay?
Thank you, Sergeant.
Any other questions? All right, we're gonna move on to item, uh, five. We're gonna discuss the reallocation of the Corona-virus state and local physical recovery funds, ARPA funds. Ms. Bandit?
While Kaylee's setting up, her and Matt and her team have done a lot of work on this over the past couple of weeks. And you, you all still have to make the decisions, though. And, uh, we really appreciate what she's done, but this is also where things start getting... The horse trade needs to be as civil as possible.
You learn more about America. Find the deal, ever need to know.
No.
Okay, so this is a condensed and updated presentation from the last time we spoke. So, we'll just go through this together. What I've done here, I'm not sure that this is on...
I don't think it is. I can just barely hear you.
Hello? Perfect, okay, now everyone can hear me. What I've done here in this first chart is just updated from the last conversations we had at council. You'll see the updated five hundred thousand dollars that was allocated and voted to give to the diabetes clinic. So, that will be dispersed via the Medical Center Foundation, so that is added in there. The total remaining funds that we have to be appropriated is eight million, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. So, that's the magic number that we are working with today. I'm gonna skip over these slides because what I did here, these are the same ones you saw last time. On this page, this list was obtained from the Public Works Department. All the ones highlighted in yellow are the same projects that are listed on those previous slides. The one up at the top, that's Crane Avenue, um, from Second Street to Pole Road, that was the only project that was, um... Let me, let me back up. The three highlighted projects in green up top are the projects that the city Public Works has identified that they would like to pursue with the funds that are currently in our budget for roads. So, the Crane Avenue Road is the only road that was on the previous slides, so that's the only project that overlaps. Um, all of the other projects in, in yellow, which we talked about last time, none of those currently, um, have plans to be done with city money, I mean, the money in the budget. And we'll route back to all of this, I'm just gonna go through all of the, the figures. Neither of these have changed, again, it's the one point four million for the updated CAD system. We did not factor in the yearly maintenance cost into the discussion or the decision because we can just visit that during the standard budgeting process. And of course, the building services HVAC replacement is still thirty thousand. We did get some updated figures from Odessa Fire Rescue, so these are their current priorities listed in order of priority. So, we have eight striker cots and power loads for new ambulances for a cost of six hundred thousand dollars. Second, we have replacement battery-powered hydraulic rescue tools for all engines and trucks at three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We have replacements for Tinder Eight, which is six hundred thousand, and I believe that's a type of truck or vehicle. Um, Chief Cottin can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and then we have the Wildland Brush Truck for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then lastly, we have one fire engine and one truck company, which is a ladder at two point nine million dollars. No changes on the police department requests, we still have the demolition of the parking lot at two oh one North Grant, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. The lobby and the public restrooms, um, two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And the modernization of the two existing elevators, three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We were not able to get the figures for the elevators at municipal court or city hall, we've had a little bit of turnover in that department. So, it just kinda caused a delay in getting the numbers, but I'm still waiting on the figure so I can get those to you when I receive them. We also got updated estimates for the Darrington plant. Um, as we spoke about last time, there's a lot of work to be done to Darrington, but these are specifically related to safety enhancements um, that are kind of the priority and what is needed to kickstart the rest of the improvements. So, we have new lights at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, new safety rails at five hundred thousand dollars. Electrical upgrades, one million dollars, crane upgrades, one million dollars. Grit removal will range from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one million. New fencing will range from two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. And the overall workplace improvements are about two million dollars. So, for your, um, discussion and decision purposes, um, these last three slides are just a summary of all of the slides before. I condensed it just for, um, viewing ease. But of course, you're free to flip back and forth to the slides as necessary. But everything that is on those slides is also on these last three charts.
Let the heckling begin. I'm just gonna open it up to Dasgum, sir. Jones?
Mayor, would you like, uh, Joe Tucker?
I'd like Joe Tucker to come up and discuss Rochester as to what we've discovered with Rochester.
Tucker?
We may, before we even...
Yeah, um, what's the new discovery about Rochester? 'Cause we already have plans drawn up and none of this was ever discussed back then.
Yes, sir. Uh, this just came up in the last couple of days, uh, as I brought up the project to some of the, the staff. Um, apparently, what they're telling me is this site was at one time a dump site, is how they described it. There was a material dump there that they feel like has contaminated the soil more than likely. And there was also a lot of salt dumped on the site, basically truckloads, is what they're telling me. Uh, they're saying there's an area, and there is a bear area on the site. And the reason for that, they're saying, is because of the salt contamination. So, um, this is new to me, but I'm trying to follow up and get more information.
How long ago was this and when did this, who, who, who came up with this information?
Um, Rhett Butler, one of, one of our guys that worked in the street department, um, twenty, twenty years ago. And, uh, what I'm trying to do, I've reached out to Joe Trammell. Some of you may know him, he was our street superintendent probably thirty years ago. And he said he had some knowledge of it, so I haven't been able to talk to Joe yet, but I've got a call in to him. So, I'm investigating to try to learn more, but this is what I've learned in just the last few days.
Do we have someone on staff or would it be very costly to, uh, hire?
Do we have someone on staff or would it be too costly to hire someone to do like a soil evaluation of that property?
That may be what we need to do, yeah. I'd kinda like to talk to Joe and see what he remembers about the site, but, uh, that's probably where we're headed, I would say. They probably need to do some excavation and soil analysis, I would think.
So, we were talking about that piece of property, my memory serves me correctly, for Habitat for Humanity.
Right.
So, my first thought, Mark, is that maybe we give Joe some time to, 'cause we can't turn over a piece of property that's contaminated. We know that.
Well, we, we had at one point, we, we gave it to, uh, OHFC and then we had a drawback clause and we took it back because they didn't...
They didn't do anything with it.
No, sir. So, what happened there was that we never deeded it over, the Rochester property, it was never deeded over.
So, we still own it?
Yeah, we still own it.
Yeah, we're just still on it right now, I know that.
Yes, sir, we still own it, but it was never formally deeded over, anything was, nothing was ever signed.
Okay.
So, the purpose for the discussion today, really all that's just supporting material about whether you wanna set aside money for work there or not, because we're getting, we've gotta have this money allocated.
Yeah.
So, that's the real purpose for the, for the discussion, isn't so much can we do anything, but should we set aside money that you're gonna want for other things? Because right now, with what Kaylee's read up to this point, if you do the HVAC and the CAD system, the CAD system's kind of a, it's gotta be done type thing. Without the HVAC, and I don't know how critical that is, you're talking about it already being down to six million, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, four hundred and forty-three dollars that you have to play with. Uh, I'd heard the number of two million set aside for this Rochester, which I don't remember the number being spoken of, but that doesn't mean anything, I don't remember a lot of things. But if there's not, you need to seriously consider if it's a problem, then do you set aside that money and you're down to...
Well, that num, that number came from, from, uh, Odessa Housing Finance Corporation when they did the property on Fitch. 'Cause they were trying to get, to go down there and build houses, which, thank God, they're not doing that, because they're not even through the, three years, not even through the ones on Fitch, not one person's moved in there yet. So, that's where that number came from, that's what my memory tells me.
Right.
What I'm getting at is you'll be...
And they came up with that number.
What I'm getting at is you'll be down to four million, six million, twenty-nine dollars that you have to play with.
Yeah, I just, I'm just upset, 'cause it always seems that every time we have, we take a step forward to this Rochester property, there's always two steps that we take back for this, um, I mean, there have always been plans for this property for the past ten, fifteen years to do housing and this never came up until now, now that we're finally gonna designate some money to it. So, I just, it, it upsets me, but, um, nothing we can do about it, just have to, I guess, now find out how much salt there is on that land.
I was disappointed too.
Before we go any further, why don't we just have it tested? That's the eat, and then you can, we can sit here and raise cane, do whatever we want to after that. But the easy fix to this is have it tested.
Yeah.
They could do core holes in several places on there and do the examination out of that and that would eliminate anymore.
But the, the, the only problem I have with that, uh, councilman, is the fact that if we're gonna do that, then we need to set two million dollars aside. We don't have that much money left, there's a lot of other projects on here, so, you know, I just think we...
Well, we can set two million, I do that road system over at your, your stuff that's running into Fodry over there 'cause we already spent thirty-four million dollars.
So, we're gonna have an east-west conversation?
Yeah.
I knew that was coming.
I know that Habitat's chomping at the bits to get there.
They call me all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was disappointed to hear it too, I've personally done a lot of work on this project.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot.
It's a good project, but we obviously have to consider the new information.
Can we not still consider the CDBG funds that we talked about? Moving forward with those housing and not using the ARPA funds? I mean, that was a discussion at one point, is that still an option?
Um, I can't speak for the CDBG funds.
I would say that's a discussion for later time, right now, we're just, just staying focused on what we have here as far as the allocation on the, on the ARPAs, you know. We're gonna do some, we're gonna do some horse trading, might as well start on it now, start going down the line and what council wants to agree, down, agree. Uh, sounds like the discussion is to have it tested. Uh, what, Joe, what, how, how would that work, would you, what kind of monies would you use? Where would it come from and, and would you have to send it out to RFP?
More than likely, yeah, 'cause it, it'd probably be over the fifty thousand, 'cause we'd wanna do pretty thorough testing on it.
How large of an area is this?
It's the, the property's seven and a half acres.
Seven and a half acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I think that, um, we can't take action or consent to move forward on that, we'd have to bring it back at another time for...
Yes, you would have to bring it back.
So, let's just do that, let's just bring it back, um, consider it, see what it would look like in RFP and give us the timetable. Um, there's no sense in estimating, 'cause we won't know until it all comes back. Uh, the other discussion is the two million, do we set it aside and only consider, what would be considered, six or four?
It would be, uh, six.
Six.
Mr. Beckmeyer was referring to if you decide to allocate monies to the CAD system, that's when it goes down to.
But CAD, is this the communication? Will it come and speak about it a little bit?
And for right now, take the HVAC off, 'cause I can find thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what that entails, I know it's part of our department, but, I guess, keeping the equipment cool. Um, our CAD system we've had since, uh, March of twenty fourteen. And, um, at the time, I guess you'd call it skinny pigs for this CAD system. CAD stands for computer aided dispatch. And, um, even though we were the initial, um, agency that took it on, we've never had the latest version of CAD. And so, we've had all kinds of glitches through the years and their maintenance, they're hard to get a hold of. And it's like they have all these subcommittees, I know Motorola is big in the industry, um, the radio side, they're getting that way CAD and they forget us littler agencies. And so, I mean, in July alone, we were down seven times and that makes it harder for us to serve the citizens. So, um, I have looked at several different, um, systems and the one that we presented is the one that's, uh, most call taker and dispatcher friendly. It's not where you have to be almost a computer genius to put an officer on a traffic stop 'cause right now we have to remember seven dots and a slash and then, you know, the call type. Whereas, you know, if you get interrupted during those, counting the seven dots, you may not get them into the computer. Um, so, I found a system that's just like normal typing. Um, I know it's on the more expensive side, I have looked at some others that are a little bit cheaper, um, and I'm willing to look at those again. It's, this is just something I went for, the one point four million encompasses five years and that includes the yearly service agreement. And then after five years, then we'd have to look at the yearly agreement with that for, um, service.
How, how would it work in, uh, retroactively putting in this new, new system, still working with the old system, then doing to transfer?
Um, they would have to build it and then get the, you know, all our information, our call types and stuff, and put it into the system. And it just doesn't include what's within our call center, includes all the MDTs for the fire department and police department as well.
Would we be doing it in the same room or would we utilize another part of the building?
It'd be all in the same room.
So, you're gonna have to work around the whole...
Um, well, they just install it into our computer system, yeah.
I'm just trying to imagine, you know, 'cause I, we have no clue.
Uh, I'm not totally techie about it, but yeah.
Okay. Council, you have any questions on this?
I think we've gotta upgrade it, it's, it's, I mean, it's for public safety.
Yeah.
And we're always screaming public safeties and I, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda like buying a new car, you drive it off the lot, it's already out of...
Yeah, I get it.
And if we've had this since twenty fourteen.
If you were to throw a number, average, slow day, what... If you were to throw a number, average, slow day, what, how many calls?
A slow day? Well, between the two departments we have between, and animal control, we have between three hundred and five hundred calls for service.
Last year we're down seven times?
Yes. That's in one month. That's like in a two week period we were down.
Oh, really?
They were trying to update us, so. And I did meet with Motorola in December. And I said, this is what we need for us to keep you. And one of them was something dealing with the radio and they did fix that. I still have as yet to get any information on updated to the latest version, so.
Council, any other questions? Appreciate it, Michelle. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. I need to ask some question, Mayor, if I may.
Go for it.
On the, on fire rescue, Chief Cotton, I've got a, because I'm, I'm old and my memory's not quite as good as it used to be. It's still not bad, but I know we ordered ambulances that won't be here for a couple more years. And I know we included those Striker cots because we, because we had a long conversation about the workman's comp issue. And man, I can't even tell you when it was, when I first got on the council. And it seems like those ambulances, because Tom Spross and I were laughing about it, that we'd be dead before they ever got here. Because of the supply chain issue.
Yes, sir.
And so are those still on order?
We have four that will be arriving this year and four that will be arriving scheduled in June of next year.
And you still want, and you still need another?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my question.
Those, that part, those parts, those things were not ordered with our ambulances.
They weren't?
No, sir.
Well, we had that conversation. I know we did.
That's one of the things we've been running into is when, when we order a vehicle, and I've gotten with Chris, we've talked about it. When we order a vehicle now, moving forward of any time, we want everything to be ordered at the same time. We want it to come the same way.
That's where we do it.
Identical.
Do you not remember that conversation, please?
Council, we, we probably did have the conversation, which is like everything else, the follow-through, before follow-through. And I make that...
Because I remember because, because, you know, I, I knew how, how important that was, it was real, I thought that was real important to get those on there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, we can operate them.
Because I talked to Mr. Wells about it, you know, it's all about a workman's comp issue.
So these...
Guys hurt their backs.
These eight, eight cots, are they replacing old ones?
No, these will be for the new ambulances. So the, the power load and the, it's the cot and the power load, it's the part that is attached to the floor of the ambulance that the cots slide into, lifts up, lifts down, stabilizes it, locks it in place, stuff like that.
Saves backs.
Are these items in, in order of rank? I mean, what you need worse?
Yes, sir.
These are in order, yeah, reference?
And it's just because we've got four coming this year and four coming next year.
What's the timeline on the ones that are coming this year? When, when are they coming?
When was it, Charles, for this year? September this year and June for next year. Four each.
So are these still having the same supply chain issues where we order these, if we were to order these eight, would they come in following you?
For the medics, the ambulances?
No, yeah, for these cots.
For the cots.
So if we were, if we were to order eight more Striker cots?
We will have them before the ambulances arrive.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah, that's what he was asking, whether we can.
So that'd be a million, so that'd be a million too?
No, sir, it's all eight of those.
Okay, that's eight, okay.
Yes, eight Striker cots and power load of six hundred thousand, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is listed twice.
We just added eight of them together at one time.
Okay.
We'll, we'll four of those and then probably wait till December and order and get the other four started.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Maybe we should have done that whole deal that we do for hot funds.
That's what I was thinking, the allocation.
Yeah.
Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet, yeah.
Bingo. I can make one real quick.
Bingo deal.
So right now...
The spreadsheet, we got everything, let it on, we just go down and then we haggle the differences. It's a real good system.
Right now, minus the CAD system, if you were to appropriate that, we're sitting at six million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars.
So take the CAD system out?
Yes, taking the CAD system out of the eight million. So approving the CAD system? Approving the CAD.
Yeah, just keep the running total, Mark, something like you can do.
Now's the time to start pitching your projects. Don't sit back there shy. There's a saying in Spanish, el que no se habla, no se oye. The one who doesn't speak up isn't heard.
Chief? You may have, you may have already gotten yours.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go over all of them.
Go for it.
Or at least the top four. So the Striker cots and power loads now, I think there might have been a misunderstanding where there was eight Striker cots and eight power loads. It's one combination, so there's only eight items. The replacement battery powered hydraulic rescue tools, ours were purchased last in 2017. And we're now paying more to service them and keep them operational than would be, than it's worth it. It'd be better for us to get on...
What kind of tools are we looking at, you know?
These are what the jaws of life, what the public considers the jaws of life. They're, they're spreaders, they're cutters and they're hydraulic rams.
How many of those do you have in inventory?
We have one on each unit. We have, we have the larger size of cutters and spreaders on the truck companies and smaller sizes on the engines. And then we have the rams on the truck companies as well.
Okay. Got a lot of usage.
Oh, yes, especially here.
So what about supply of those? Are they easy to get?
Yes, sir. It wouldn't be a problem.
And these would go on the new?
We, those would replace all of our current ones that we have on all the trucks and engines.
Okay, what about the, okay, we have not getting, not, new ambulances, not new fire trucks yet?
Correct, yes, sir.
I was thinking we had one fire truck, but I guess it's already here.
Replacements for, so I put replacement slash S for Tender Eight. So Tender Eight is a steel fire apparatus that we had custom built in 2012. To give you an idea what it is, it's a rolling water source. Anytime we run where there's no hydrants, mostly county, we send a tender with us. So it's a three thousand gallon-ish, give or take, depending on which one goes out with us. And that's our water source, most of the time when we're in the county. This truck specifically is dangerous. It's top-heavy, it roadwalks bad. And for, hate to say this out loud, but it probably never should have been purchased. Mostly because of how dangerous it is. What we would like to do is we also have Tender One and Tender Seven. We'd like to keep those two vehicles. Get rid of this one, mostly because of the danger of it. And the thing that we're kind of leaning towards is we've never had a true off-road, wildland brush truck capability. Now, we have a small, like you see below that, the wildland brush truck. We have a small one of those. It's five hundred gallons. It's a small truck. It's got a small tank on the back. That's great. But we, I wish I could show you pictures, but, and I'll just use Goldsmith as an example. Goldsmith Volunteer Fire Department has two six-by-sixes. And those guys are invaluable to us when we get called on grass fires in the county. They show up, they take care of business. That's what we want in place of this.
So you're getting rid, you get rid of Tender Eight and they replace it with the, the wildland brush truck? Or you want some of...
No, sir, the wildland brush truck's separate. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a smaller vehicle. But the two that we're thinking of, they can, they can drive in sand, in our sandy, the county areas that have a lot of sand in them. They can go off-road. The tenders that we have now, they're hard to get off-road because you're gonna get them stuck.
Any, any questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
It's like a public hearing.
Yeah, helpful, Mayor. So you've had the opportunity to listen to a couple presentations already on the Darrington plant. And you have a pretty good idea of what's going on out there. The biggest concern that I have as the director is the welfare and safety of our staff. Right now, one of the big issues is lighting at nighttime. We have operators walking around out there with just flashlights with inadequate lighting. That could cause a major issue if something happened or we had an emergency. Again, the safety rails, you've seen those, you've seen pictures, you understand that those rails are falling apart. They're coming, they're falling off the concrete and it could cause any kind of detrimental fall if something was to happen. The grit removal system, I think that is something that, you know, we've been going without for quite a bit of time. It definitely needs to be considered and added to the plant at any point in time. We don't have any kind of grit removal going on right now, so all that grit is going into those racetracks and can cause significant damage in the long term of things. And then again, just the overall workplace, you know, we have the degraded concrete, the walkways. In fact, we're having an issue right now where we need to fix one of the air raiders. And we're having a hard time getting a crane that will suit our needs to reach that air raider. And they've talked about maybe using the Bobcat to reach it. But again, they're, they have some trepidations and some fears of walking across some of those catwalks.
Council, any questions?
Lots. Do we not, in the water sewer fund, do we not have any money available to do some of this stuff, John? Or Kaylee, whoever wants to answer the question?
I'll, I'll answer it. I'm just trying to figure out what the total on this was. It's quite a bit.
Yeah.
I've got, and I think I've mentioned this to a couple of you. I've identified where I can pull right out a million dollars, around nine hundred thousand, five hundred dollars to address some of these issues that could take this down some. Take it down about a million dollars out of what it's around cot that it looks like's on here. So we can take it down some to address some of the more urgent needs as identified by Kevin. I would suggest that we put some ARPA money into it to address some of the other needs. We've got to keep this running until we can do something bigger. And some of the more like these first two, I can knock those right off, right off the bat.
Right, lights and the rails?
That's eight fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
I can knock those right off.
So that'll, that'll take up what you've got.
We know the crane situation is bad.
If we're gonna do the lights like that, you might as well do some electrical upgrades while you got, while you have a lighting company out there, so.
I think I'd be for the crane upgrades. We've heard about that and it's an issue.
Yeah.
So I think we take the eight fifty out of the water sewer budget because that's gonna be replenishing itself. So it won't be like us down to zero. And then I'm kind of like the mayor, I think the crane's important. For a million bucks, maybe that's a million bucks for ARPA, I don't know.
So we, we'd be doing all the crane upgrades for a million, right?
I don't know if you're gonna be able to get all the crane upgrades. I think you'll be able to get them to where they're at least operational.
Okay.
Again, these aren't replacing, these are getting, this is just getting to where they're operational.
Yeah. And, yeah.
So in Texas, it's fixing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. But that'll at least, that'll at least keep us operational.
Yes.
We, so what we do right now, the, what do we kind of, we're gonna do the CAD system, right, in HVAC?
I don't know yet. Let's, let's, before we start divvying up money, let's, let's hear some more. Come up and we'll try to find some overlap agreements on this.
I think Chief Gerke was gonna come and speak.
You gotta be a lot faster. I know you got, you're weighted more. You got more, you got equipment.
That was a little hurtful.
Please explain.
You're looking good.
Little hurtful. I, I think when you look at this list, it's, it's kind of inverted. We would, our number one priority would be the elevators. Those elevators are constantly going down when we're dealing with the public and, and worried about ADA issues and things like that. Those elevators going down and possibly, and we have had employees stuck in those elevators for a period of time.
Chief, is this a replacement or a repair or an upgrade?
This is actually modernization. So you take the, the existing elevators and put all new hardware and, and modernize them. If you look at the packet that we, I don't know if they've got the packet that I submitted to you, the emails that I submitted to you, but I can bring that stuff back to you. It really does modernize the, the look, all the equipment. They warranty them for a good number of years. So that would solve a lot of issues for a lot of years. Again, they're original to the building from nineteen eighty-two, so they're forty-two years old. So, yeah, it, it's time for replacement of those things. Probably the number two priority would be the demolition of the, of the parking structure. That structure is really beyond repair. It, it needs to come down because it is, I mean, I believe it is a danger to anyone that parks and walks under it and that sort of thing. I think it needs, it needs to come down.
Didn't we find money for that, that you already had for the walkway? Because there's no need for a walkway if we...
Well, there's, my understanding is that that money existed, but then it didn't exist. That, that money was supposed to be in the building services budget. That's what we were told and then apparently it's not.
I'll have to check on that because there was...
Let's check on that because...
That, that was a meeting that we had that, that, yes, that money did not exist.
That, that money...
Mr. Bernard, do you remember that meeting? You were in that meeting.
What, what kind of monies were we talking about that was supposed to be in the building?
Pretty close to what it would take to tear it down.
Absolutely, yes.
Just almost one for one. If that money...
That is absolutely correct.
If that money exists, we don't have to dip into this to tear that...
Yeah, let's, let's put an asterisk on that.
You're talking about the demo?
The demo, yeah. And have this band to look for and if it's in there, then we can, we free up about two eighty right there. I mean, I think we, I think we're all in agreement that thing needs to go down. But I would agree with you. If you have an elevator situation, we better get on it.
Right.
Because it is gonna go down.
And then the, the restrooms, we, we, a couple of years ago, we came to, to you guys and we proposed renovation of those two restrooms in, in our lobby. Again, forty-two years old, they hadn't been renovated in forty-two years. We had an estimate of about eighty to ninety thousand dollars to renovate that. When we went out to bid, it came back, every bid we got was over two hundred thousand dollars for the renovation. Which was crazy. So that's the ask there. Again, that's the last on our list.
So Kayla, my, my question is, the buildings, would the two seventy-six take up all the building services funds?
Again, I'm not sure because those were not my funds.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure the exact dollar amount that's in there, but I will play out.
It's a possibility to roll over monies.
Because I'm saying two oh eights is not a huge number, you know?
Just, it's either a yes or a no, but more likely.
There is, there's still some money left over for the, the training center. Okay. Um, so, but it has to be tied into the training center. So, and you, there's a case that you could tie it into it, so.
The demo?
Yes.
Okay. Well...
It's easier access to the training, training center.
Well, basically, if, if, if there's, if there's leftover money from the training center, we can do demo, use that money, then you have the two oh eight for the bathrooms. And the elevators.
So how much is there?
Well, I don't know. That's what they're gonna have to check into.
Oh, I'm talking about the training center funds.
That's what they're gonna look into.
So it's, it's left over and that's what we're gonna do, work on the sky, sky bridge with. But...
If, if we don't have... Yeah, if it comes down, there's no need for the sky bridge. And then the second part of that is then we have to find money to rebuild a new garage, which we will need, parking.
Correct, and that's what we currently...
Okay. Balance of scales. All right. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. Give us, give us a minute.
Absolutely.
All right, anybody else before we start slashing the pot? Joe, you've been, you started off with bad news, then it was good news.
Yeah, I did. I apologize for that. Yeah, I'll just make one quick pitch. Y'all know the condition of our roads and right now our, we've identified over a hundred and thirty million dollars worth of projects. I think every time we get together, that list grows, so. Any money you appropriate, we'll put... we'll put to good use.
The dream project would have been doing the dawn.
I made it.
Do the dawn, but there's, we got so much need.
Yeah. Well, crane's already been engineered, it's, I mean, it's shovel ready, right, Joe?
Crane's going to bid next month.
Next month?
Yeah.
And we've been talking about that forever.
So I know, I know we're not divving, divving up money yet, but if you look at the CAD system, the cranes, the elevators, with us taking care of other things at the Darrington from other money, you're looking at five million, three hundred and fifteen, seven, seven, four.
So at least about three million for anything else.
Ms. Banda?
Yes.
On, on what you have on the screen right now?
Yes.
If you look down to, uh, North Dixie Boulevard in yellow, Forty-Sixth Street to Walnut?
Mm-hmm.
It says one million, six hundred thousand?
Yes.
Here it says two million, six hundred thousand, I just wanted to make sure which one it is.
This list came directly from, um, Public Works, like spreadsheet, so I would rely on this one. This other one was just from a conversation that we had.
I'd go with the higher one.
Joe, can you provide any insight?
Okay. Okay.
I, I will say, I've never experienced a, a project go down, never.
I would, I would rely more heavily on this one, this one came straight from Public Works, this spreadsheet.
Hmm. I will tell you, I've got a lot of constituents in North Dixie that want that road. That's, that's, uh, that's a gutter road. And, uh.
Crossed by Sherwood Park.
Yeah, but that goes down, that goes right across, uh, down to Walnut.
Joe, how much of District Four is affected by that one that I'm bringing to your attention right now?
That affects the central of the city. Which one is this? North Dixie to Forty-Sixth to Walnut, that goes right across, uh, south on the Forty-Second.
It says, it says that it's three and four and I'm, I'm assuming most of it is. District that I represent.
Yeah, I know this. That's a gutter road.
Yeah, I agree.
District three and four?
Yeah.
And we've done North Dixie was above Forty-Sixth twice and the residents down there, that we know.
Mm-hmm.
Dixie one. It's primarily in four.
Primarily in four?
Yes.
That's in, Mr. Connell's.
Little bit into three.
Eight million just don't go as far as it used to.
So we have eight million to allocate, basically, right?
Well, if you don't pull the two.
Right on the edges.
Yes.
Now you have five.
You know, right now, what we're looking at, we're playing, we're playing with five million.
It's, that one is right on the edge of two.
Basically on the edge. Dixie is, splits the two districts.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Banda.
I will say that, you know, that, uh, that North Dixie to Forty-Sixth to Walnut is a gutter road, goes down to Thirty-Eighth, and then it just makes its way back into the Dixie central portion into Muskinga. Uh, it's a slow meandering one, but when that wa, water rushes and stays at Forty-Second, it cuts right across that, uh, that residential area where we're supposed to keep a sweeper as soon as it rains in there all the time. I get a, ex, a city employee that calls.
Mayor, I know you know, but remember, this is just a discussion.
I know. Right now, we're, we're splitting hairs and.
You gotta have your kind of play around, you can't make any final.
But we can come up with, we can come up with a close final list.
Yes.
And that's what we're trying to do.
And then we'll put it on for the thirteenth to vote.
With no changing of mind after today.
If y'all can come up with a close list and Ms. Banda can go put it together, refine it, bring it back to you for possible approval on the thirteenth.
I'd say, I'd say we get close to the amount because in two weeks, we start cutting, it's gonna hurt.
With the lobby restrooms and the police department not being ADA, are we, um, opening up ourselves for any kind of lawsuits or?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
When do you, when do you get those into blocks?
Yeah.
That'll help a lot if we can get that out of the.
But if there's, if there's rollover money from the twenty nineteen from the center, that opens up money for, uh, the other two, the bathrooms and the, uh, elevators.
Right.
And it lets us play with an additional two eighty. Not that it's a lot, but it helps.
Every two eighty helps.
Mr. Connell, Mr. Hane?
It's apparent we're not gonna get many roads now out of this, which is.
We're not gonna get any roads out of this because.
Except ma, except maybe that Dixie, except maybe that Dixie, uh, part that the mayor's talking about. You know, we've, we've hit a million six.
One point six.
So it's a reasonable number for something that traverses so much of the city.
Yeah.
It goes almost, it goes a long way.
And Mr. Hane, you, in District Five, you've got Sixteenth, Harless Avenue to Loop Two Thirty-Eight, that's where your, uh, fire station is? West County to Harless, I'm sorry, and that's another three million. You know, so that's in that area.
Yeah, I understand, I represent all constituents, so looking at that large, but the ones I get pounded on is, uh, Fifty-Second to Andrews Highway and to Dixie. So, I mean, that's out of the question unfortunately for ARPA funds.
Right. And so you take Fifty-Sixth Second down to Fifty-Sixth and Billy Hext down to One Ninety-One and, which is where all the traffic is, which is, I get hammered on, so. But Fifty-Second as well, because people are, people are moving off of Fifty, Fifty, Forty-Second to Fifty-Second, that's, you know, I know that's the east side of town, that's Hane, but that's where the people are. That's where they're running up and down the road and where all the crashes are. So people have gotten smart and they're shifting over to Fifty-Second, so I.
I'm sorry, I've got about forty thousand people a day going down one road, so that's a lot of people.
Down what road?
Down West County Road, I've got a bunch of people going down that, all the side roads coming from west, I get all the traffic from out west into here.
Mr. Hane, that's Tex dot, not us.
And, uh.
He's forgetting that. That is like, that is on system with Tex dot.
Yeah, well, so was Tex dot should have took care of Fodderay Road because that was a loop.
Well, go, go talk to them, I'm on that, I'm on that board, I talk to them all the time about it.
So, but we did.
My job is to relay your, your concerns to, uh, to the board at MPO and, and the district engineer sits on that board and I've relayed that because you brought it up several times, so I've relayed that to him on your behalf, as I have pressing him on Yukon, to put it on system and trade him off, try to trade off some, some properties, so there's, we have so many needs, but you gotta remember what's, what's Tex dot and what's not.
So to add some, some good news that I just thought about, we probably should look at taking another six hundred thousand off that before for the fire department strikers.
I agree.
Because I just didn't write that down, sorry.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, the strikers are important, that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, what's the point of having an ambulance if we don't have strikers?
Well, it's just a, it's an issue for the fire, it's a safety issue for the fire line. I don't want the, 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 the crews to get, you know, back, to get back injuries.
Yeah. So you're saying you have that, is that what I heard, Mr. Beckmeyer, or you?
He just added it to the.
Oh, okay.
And I dropped it down to about four something.
Four, seven, fifteen, seven, seven, four.
Any of those projects on Harless? Sixteen, so Joe, Sixteenth and Harless Avenue to Loop, Loop Two Fifty, is that from West County? Oh, to Three Thirty-Eight to the Loop? It's a, what, four lane?
Yeah, we were looking at Harless to the Loop, Sixteenth Street from Harless to the Loop.
There's also one right there.
And so from West County to Harless is three million?
Actually, we split it into two projects just because of the numbers.
So that's five million?
Harless to the Loop, we figured would be two million. County Road West to Harless is additional three million.
And our fire stations on the, uh, West County at Harless, it's east of Harless, right?
Yes.
It's five, it's five million on those two projects. I mean.
That is, that's five million dollars.
Three Thirty-Eight and Harless, yeah. So, so if we do that five million, Mr. Beckmeyer, is that, you, how much we have to speed it up on, Mark?
So we have about two point two six million left. If we, what I have written down here is, uh, the CAD system, HVAC, striker, beds, the crane, parking lot demo, lobby restrooms and elevators.
We have four million, seven hundred and fifteen, seven, seven, four. That's with the CAD system, the cranes, the elevators and the strikers.
And Councilman Moner, are you setting aside two million for Rochester or what are you all doing? Are you not even worried about Rochester?
Uh, if, if we set aside Rochester, I'm sure when that time comes, something knows what happened.
I'm with you on that one, too, by the way.
Well, that's what happens when you add and subtract, math doesn't lie, you get to nothing eventually.
So you don't have anything for the Darrington there, do you?
We're not gonna get any roads on this.
The cranes, that's it, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
He said we've got a million dollars for the lighting and the.
The one road that you pointed out, I don't think any of these rest of these roads will have enough money to do this, that maybe we can prioritize some of the other stuff with the fire department and get that knocked out of the way.
Okay, so use it for, uh, go look at more, uh, of the, uh.
Away from the roads and toward, toward this, that's, that's, I think we're all in agreement toward that.
Want to get back on that list on, uh, what we're seeing from departments?
A summary list?
Yeah.
I think that because of the lack of money, Mr. Hane, I agree with you a hundred percent, we ought to do the ones that affect more people. And even though roads affect everybody, the things we're talking about here are very essential.
Yeah, we'll just, uh, share the, the bad roads with everybody.
Yeah. Already doing that.
Even worse now.
Okay, uh, I put the tender back on, six hundred K.
We are gonna get towards summertime. Chief, when would that, that wild brush truck be ready?
The two seventy-five?
The two seventy-five.
The two seventy-five.
The brush truck.
I couldn't give you a date on that. I'd be making it up. Of course, we'd get it started as soon as possible, though. And we know number five's a big ask, but.
Number five? Yeah, is the fire engine, two, two point nine.
Just out of curiosity, Chief, are these wildland brush trucks, where do they come from? Where are they constructed? Where are they built?
Uh, in the past, we bought them from Steel Fire Apparatus, which is the, the tender eight that we want to replace. Honestly, I don't know where they're from.
Okay.
Our wildland truck that we have now, we got from Sidings.
Okay, so he's gonna shoot, he's gonna, I'm gonna shoot my recommendations real quick and come up with this one. I'm gonna kind of do it like what we do with the, uh, the spreadsheet. Uh, the eight striker cots and power loads, six hundred. Placing, uh, battery powered hydraulic rescue tools, three fifteen. Tender truck, replacement for tender eight, six hundred thousand. Brush truck at two seventy-five. PD is, uh, elevators, three thirteen, six, sixty-nine. Um, two oh eight, uh, for the public restrooms, two oh eight, one thirty-nine. And then the demolition at two seventy-six, eight ninety, with the asterisk that if it, there is, the money is there from the, uh, twenty nineteen of the center, then that's pulled back to make it up, any discrepancies.
As well as the restrooms, right?
Yeah, so the elevators, the restrooms, and then the asterisk on the two seventy-six, eighty-nine. Because we have a question, we may have that in the twenty nineteen, uh, rol, uh, rollover monies from the, uh, training center. So if the money's there, then that two seventy-nine goes back into the pot.
Right, and then we could do the two, then we could take, do the two.
Got money to do the restrooms.
So, yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm adding, I'm adding the restrooms already.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So then we go into the Bo, into the Bob Darrington. Lights? The new lights, the new safety rails?
Okay, I'll close.
Uh, you got those? Okay, so then go to the crane upgrades, the grit removal.
That's a million, nine hundred and seven fifty.
And then, uh.
So the safety rails, I'm sorry, Kevin Lee, I'm sorry. Safety rails and the fencing are two different issues?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, because these are safety rails and then the fencing.
Yeah, like around that one, like, like around the, the.
Barriers.
Lockups, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Didn't y'all say the sa, the, the safety rails and the new lights, you thought we had that taken care of?
Yes.
Out of, okay.
Yes. So then, then, so basically, then we go over to, then we'll consider the great crane upgrades, grit removal, and then the new fencing.
That's too many.
That's what?
That's almost too many.
Just alone.
So. With the, uh, let me make sure I get this right here, the CAD system, the HVAC system?
I thought we pulled.
We pulled the HVAC.
Not the HVAC, okay.
Yeah, we pulled that. Yeah, we put the HVAC out.
Uh, the, the beds?
Yeah.
The, uh, brush truck?
Yes.
And the, uh, the crane, grit removal, the fencing.
Yes.
The, uh, I didn't include the parking lot demo because we may have that money.
Yes.
The lobby restroom?
Yes.
And the elevators, that's five point one million, so that leaves us about two point eight out of the eight million.
Okay.
To go to Rochester.
I also have the, the rescue tools and the tender eight on my list that Mayor just said.
The overall workplace improvements at, uh, Bob Darrington.
What, what, what did you say, I'm sorry, Kay?
The hydraulic rescue tools and the tender eight were things that Mayor had also mentioned.
I had the tender eight and the hydraulic tool.
Right. All right. How much was the tender?
That must about do it.
The tender eight was six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the replacement battery hydraulic tools were three hundred and fifteen.
So that would put us at one point nine. Yeah, I got it now.
Okay.
Total of six, six million, eighty-four thousand.
Chief, you got a million dollars laying around and we'll give you the rest, you can make up the, uh, for the fire engine.
Time to get the boot out.
Councilman Moner, what did that leave? Because I lost track.
Yes, um, so that would leave us with one point nine million left to allocate. One million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five.
Is that after the road at Dixie? Is that fixing the deal at Dixie?
No, that's not in his, that's not in his.
That's, that's just the, uh, the list from the city employees.
So we have enough money to fix the deal at Dixie?
Yes.